Okay, call meeting ordered at seven o'clock. First thing on the agenda, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Next, approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes. Motion made by Mr. Pfaff, seconded by Mr. Bishinsky to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky? Albert votes yes. Passes five zero. Next, the utilities.
Everybody's got a copy of the report. Still didn't look around about the project, the color replacement project. It's like this never-ending saga keeps going on and on. Hopefully, we'll be done with it, but they'll try to work out some of the relocations for the water main. And then we have a course made that could be in the way too, which the Culver Road bus station, which could be possibly a problem too. So, in dot is hired. Their consultant's hired someone to hopefully locate it. We'll see what's going on with that. We have several water main breaks. They were on the old mains. They found their shear brakes, which typically like to see that. They just show their age. It's a little bit repaired. Ways Water, the things we're working with McMahon to do some upgrades to the Van Finchwood station. And also, the Westville Estates Line station needs to be, it's really in bad shape. I think we're in a bad position. I talked to John from Superior Pumping. He may have a replacement. Well, the amount of light and lights there, we can probably, should hopefully get the reasonable thought. If not, we've got the old one from the old plant that we will need to put, it looks like we'll need to put that type of bus station in because the water was so shallow. I'm thrilled about it, but I think that probably we're not going to need to do. The last thing I have is, we've been, still spending a lot of time on the wastewater treatment renovation project. It's moving ahead. Other than that, that's all we've got. Any questions?
No. Next, next question. Streets?
I just have one thing. Month of February, you all know we had several inches of snow, a ton of snow if you already have. We have three men to manage, the street department and all its glory. These guys work with pride in the things they do. We try not to cower to any of these properties, any mailboxes, whatever. We had so much snow, we didn't have enough place to put it, so we called in an outside contractor and some areas, the piece of equipment he was using, tore up some of the grass and stuff. We're already reseeding and leveling the lawn, making it right with anybody that's got problems. These guys, like I said, they take a lot of pride in what they do. It will be fixed if you have a problem that maybe haven't got to. I know they've got all of Jacob Dunn, they fixed the mailbox on Allen John Drive. They're doing the best they can. Sometimes in the winter, you can't foresee things that happen, so this is what we're trying to get done. And on another subject, mailboxes. Laura's got somebody to print it out if anybody wants it. We got this from the post office. When your mailboxes aren't curved, with the box open, the lid is supposed to be back eight inches off the curve. If you don't have a curve and you open the street, same distance. Some of them are way past that. It makes it difficult to plow, it makes it difficult to mail. So, we're doing our best to get the things rectified. Sorry, we had some problems with the lawns. We will take care of it. We always have in the point of some years like that or this council. Just bear with us and appreciate what we've got. Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. Anything else on streets? Parks?
It's that time of year, so it looks like we have folk here from Johnson &amp; Johns. So, nothing has changed per se, but it looks like the prices are the same as the 2019 and then 2020, because obviously it goes up. I don't know, we just want to approve this, we're agreed it. At Main Street Park, there's going to be the one handicap restroom with hand sanitizer and serviced Mondays and Fridays. Prairie Meadow Park is one handicap restroom with hand sanitizer, also serviced the same day, and two regular restrooms with hand sanitizer, also serviced the same days. And now we have Blue Line Park, actually, with one handicap restroom and hand sanitizer, also serviced the same day. So, looks like season total for 2021 is $4,008, 2022 is $4,203, and 2023 is $4,550. Hopefully, we have a really great repertoire with them, so I'm okay if we, I'd like to make a motion to approve Johnson &amp; Johns in the next three years.
Motion made by Mrs. Pethorsky, seconded by Mrs. Riddell to approve the rates with Johnson &amp; Johns for 2021, 22, 23. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
Yes.
Albert votes yes. Passes five zero. I was contacted, got an email from Jenny McBride from TriCap, and she asked about using Prairie Meadow for the flower sales, and we already did that a couple of months ago. And then she wanted to know about if they could reserve it for Pumpkin Fest. Hopefully, you know, things will clear up enough for October 1st and 2nd, possibly the 3rd. So, it'd be Friday, Saturday, and possibly Sunday. It's the corresponding day we've always, they have always had COVID issues permitting. It looks like it might hopefully free up a little bit. I'll make a motion, then we allow Pumpkin Fest to use the park that we've been, unusual restrictions and any issues we've worked on before them. Motion made by Albert, seconded by Mr. Bishinsky to approve the TriCap. We use Prairie Meadow Park on October 1st, 2nd, possibly the 3rd for the Pumpkin Fest. Any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
Yes.
Albert votes yes. Passes five zero. Police, anything else on parks?
No.
Police? Oh, there you are. Well, I did recognize you with the mask on.
All right, so month of February, we had 355 called for service, 27 SS other agencies, 19 ordinance violations, nine traffic accidents, and 42 traffic stops. As promised at the last week, under the formal marshal version, we looked into caliber RMS for four reasons. It is what the entire county uses. However, a few years ago, when we looked into it, they gave us an extraordinarily high bid for it, quote unquote. This quote came in much more substantially lower and a lot more cost effective for our agency. It's something actually I can afford without asking for an additional money. The quote is $2,604. Like I said, that's a lot more affordable, and that gets us to where we need to be in the law enforcement agency in the 21st century. It has a lot of key attributes that'll help us to do our job more effectively. And I did find out that actually the online storage of it meets all for the cloud, meets all Indiana requirements for retention schedules, so we will also probably end up saving money on paper, well, longer. We will have a physical onsite storage, because the cloud will support it, and we are within the Indiana statute guidelines. Yeah, so the first year is $2,604, and then that's based on five full-time officers and four part-time. If that were to change, we'd have to obviously get it included, but that is where we are at for this year, to get off the money. That's installed, that's everything. There's no additional cost on top of that.
That's higher, is that, that's higher this year because you got the...
Part-time.
Well, the installation, the...
No, it will be approximately the same every year. We're simply paying for the licenses. Those break down to $372 for a license for full-time, $186 for the part-time, half the cost of the part-time.
And that's just to get other names in the system?
Yes. Yep. So, the name, and then, like I said, this is, I think, a great tool that will connect us with all our surrounding agencies that we work with and demand on a daily basis.
Make a motion, or...
Does he need to make a motion, or does he need to set his budget?
Does he need to budget?
Yeah. And the next piece is, oh, fifth officer. So, right now, we tested a few weeks ago. We got five applicants actually made through both the local and the written portion, as well as a panel interview with the current team on staff. We were impressed with every individual that came through. They all made it through number one, respectfully withdrew to another hiring at another agency. So, right now, we're certainly looking at four people doing background investigations and looking forward as quickly as possible. And then the last item is 2021-2. I will speak to Mr. Riddell about the passage of a safety board. This would be our eleventh annual mayor commission that would handle basically all hiring, firing, and promotional within the department. Outlineing it, there's only a couple of pages on, but essentially, we have one member from the town council, and it can be the police liaison. One member selected by myself and my chief deputy, and then the last person would be selected by all sworn members, not as administrative, not serving an administrative role. I think there are a lot of other things there. If you guys had any questions about that, I don't know.
Does everyone want to look this over and then act on it next month? Do you guys want time to look at it if there are any questions? Are we in a, we're not in retirement streak at this point?
No, no, absolutely not.
Is that fine?
If the rest of the council was to, I already know, I mean, is everybody else supposed to wait till next month?
Want a chance to look through it?
It's just taking the place of the mayor board.
For, for the league, right.
Right.
Something we gotta have.
Yeah.
Are you fine with acting on it tonight and holding?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got ordinance 2021-2, an order to the town council, the town of Westville, Indiana, establishing a safety board for the Westville Police Department. Whereas Indiana Code 3657 sets forth a statutory definition and powers for the town marshal, where in house pursuant to Indiana Code 3683, a local authority such as the town of Westville, Indiana, is permitted to establish a safety board. Whereas the establishment of the safety board relinquishes the police department from utilizing the civil service commission, whereas the town council, the town of Westville, Indiana, has determined that it is in the best interest to the citizens of Westville, Indiana to enact an ordinance establishing a safety board to oversee the Westville Police Department. Now therefore, be it resolved, established, and ordained by the town council, the town of Westville, Indiana, follows. Section one, organization of safety boards shall consist of three members comprised of one member selected by the town council, can be the police liaison, however, the police liaison may not receive additional compensation for this duty. One member selected by the town marshal, one member selected by the non-administrative police personnel. Safety board members will be approved for membership by a majority vote of the town council. Members may be removed at the request of the appointing unit and unanimous vote of the town council. Members must live within the geographical jurisdiction of the town of Westville, possess strong character, and be representing the community standards for the town of Westville. Members are to serve a term of four years with no set term limit. Members will be subject to appointment at the town board meeting directly preceding the swearing-in of the newly-elected town board. Members will be internally, members will internally select a member to serve as board chair. Safety board will convene regularly two times a year at the direction of the board chair and at the request of the town marshal in special circumstances, including but not limiting to hiring, firing, and promotional processes. The two designated meetings will consist of training and legal updates at the discretion of the police liaison or members selected by the town council. Special appointments will take place in the event a member has vacated his or her seat on the safety board and at the time of this ordinance's passage. Section two, authority, the town council retains the sole ability to appoint a town marshal in accordance with Indiana Code 3657, Indiana Code 36833C1. Town marshal shall appoint the Westville Police Department's chief deputy with a majority vote of approval from the safety board. The safety board will appoint a full-time and part-time sworn law enforcement personnel with recommendation of the town marshal, and being in accordance with standard set forth in Indiana Code 3683.2 for probationary term of one year. After successful completion of probationary status, personnel shall be retained for regular full-time employment. The safety board will be tasked with internal promotions within the police department through a formal process of including but not limited to a written test and interview. The safety board will oversee all discipline, the motion dismissal, including hearings, appeals, and administrative leave as set forth in Indiana Code 36834. Members are entitled to notification of the town marshal's recommendation of termination or devotion to the safety board. Town marshal may suspend any member without approval of safety board for a maximum of five days. The town marshal must notify and write in to the safety board of any member's suspension or leave and justification. Safety board will also appoint and terminate non-sworn positions such as clerical and technical support positions within the department, considering guidelines established and the recommendation of the town marshal. The town marshal retains exclusive control of the operations of the police department in Indiana Code 36833G. Section three, compensation. Members will receive a yearly compensation of $100 a year for services rendered in the best interest of the police department, town council, and town of Westville. Section four, repeal or all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of inconsistency. It is provided, however, that such appeal shall only be to the extent of such inconsistency, and in all other aspects, the ordinances or parts of ordinances are hereby ratified, reestablished, and confirmed. Effective date, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption in the procedures required by law. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2021-2 on the first reading. Motion made by Albert, seconded by Mrs. Riddell to approve ordinance 2021-2 on the first reading. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
Yes.
Albert votes yes. Passes five zero.
I imagine that we suspend the rule.
And adopt. I'll second the motion. We have a motion by Mrs. Riddell, seconded by Albert to suspend the rules and adopt ordinance 2021-2. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Albert votes yes. Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
Yes.
Passes five zero. We've got, is there anything else on...
With that, I will submit for your guidance, recommendation, obviously, that's for the ordinance, that I have the members selected, at least by myself and my team. So, I will submit these letters to you.
Okay, this is from the marshal selection. Dear town board members, with the passage of ordinance 2021-2, I respectfully submit Lindsey Fletcher, a town of Westville resident, to my nomination and service to the Westville Police Department and the town of Westville. Thank you for consideration in this matter. And, want to act on this one? We approved it, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion that we approve Lindsey Fletcher as the marshal's appointment. Motion made by Albert, seconded by Mrs. Riddell to appoint Lindsey Fletcher as the marshal's appointment to the board. Any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
Yes.
Albert votes yes. Passes five zero. Let's see, this is from the officers, non-administrative, town council members with the passage of ordinance 2021. We respectfully submit Darren Mercer, a town of Westville resident, as our nomination and service to the Westville Police Department and the town of Westville. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Tempest Miller and Dylan Barton.
Make a motion that we accept Darren.
I'll second. Motion made by Mrs. Riddell, seconded by Albert to approve the appointment by Tempest Miller and Dylan Barton of Darren Mercer. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
This is for the, the city board, the mayor board.
Yeah, the mayor board.
Okay, yes. Or safety board, I'm sorry, not the mayor board. Safety board, safety board.
And Albert votes yes. Passes five zero.
Now, the council has to submit their recommendation.
I, I think the liaison should be the council. I'll second that, or, okay. Motion made by Albert, seconded by Mr. Bishinsky to appoint Regina Riddell as the council's representative. If elected, will you serve?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell? Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
Yes.
Albert votes yes. Passes five zero. Anything else on police? I've got the fire department activity recap. February calls, February 2021 calls, town limits 13, McDermott Township 11, that's a close name, Jackson Township 11, mutual aid two, for total 37. Breakdown EMS 26, NVA with injuries, motor vehicle accidents with injury two, without injuries one, three disregarded, one false alarm, two citizen playing on open burn, and one, a mutual aid for two building fires. Happening, the Westville Volunteer Department would like to express our greatest appreciation to the town and council, but it funds to use to purchase two sets of structural firefighting gear for all our members, as well as two sets of wildlife gear for all members. As time progresses, firefighters are faced with an extraordinary rising rate of cancer due to toxins that are released in modern fires. Additional gear allows us to properly decontaminate gear without members being placed out of service until their gear has been decontaminated. This further strengthens our abilities to keep our members as well as their families safe for after calls. Awaiting results from the ISO audit in October. ISO grades the water department, the water supply, hydro, testing, and maintenance, as well as the fire department on vehicles and equipment, and the abilities to respond and get water on a fire in a timely manner. This rating has significant effect on taxpayers' home insurance rates, particularly, I would imagine, ones that live farther away from water. Currently gathering specs of multiple apparatus manufacturers for a new pumper tanker. This alone made two of our oldest pieces of equipment have succumbed to corrosion due to age, as well as road treatments in the winter. One of them has an approximately 24-inch crack on the frame and was immediately taken out of service, and still looking for new members. COVID restricted much of their ability to recruit new members, for example, going to the high school and talking to juniors and seniors, as well as not being able to have an open-door policy for visitors at the station where we regain potential new members. While we're talking about the equipment, we purchased a share of the clothing, and so we can show to the state board of counts that we bought it and it's not part of the annual contract. I will make the motion that we donate that equipment to the fire department.
Second motion.
Okay. Motion made by Albert, seconded by Mr. Bishinsky to donate that equipment purchased to the fire department. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
Yes.
Albert votes yes. Passes five zero. And, let's see. Finance, a loan on the police truck, payoff is approximately $31,325.74. We have enough in CEDIT. We're headed CEDIT to pay that off, and it'll save $2,000 or $3,000 in interest cost over the life, the remaining life of the loan. So, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and pay that off.
Thank you.
Motion made by Albert, seconded by Mrs. Riddell to pay the loan off and we're going to CEDIT for the truck, approximately $31,325.74. Any discussion? Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Bishinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Pethorsky?
Yes.
Albert votes yes. Passes five zero. Okay, we have ordinance 2021-3. It's an ordinance authorizing expenditure of limited funds for the promotion of town business. We've always had this statute, recently changed, so to keep in line with statute, we will have an ordinance for this, as we have in the past. It's an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of limited funds for the promotion of businesses, promotion of business in the town of Westville, Indiana. Whereas the town of Westville's proposed periodic expenditure of funds for the promotion of the town of Westville, whereas funds have previously been used for a purpose set forth in this ordinance, whereas the town is authority pursuant to Indiana Code 3613 to enable the town of Westville to invest in its activities, it is determined it is in the best interest of the town and its residents to invest in the promotion of the town of Westville. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the town of Westville, the Ford County, Indiana, that section one, foregoing recitals are hereby incorporated in this ordinance as set forth herein. Section two, the town of Westville may budget as appropriate funds from the general fund to pay the expense of or to reimburse town officials for expenses incurred in promoting in the best interest of the town, such as expenses. Such expenses may include, but are not limited to, staff events, nonprofit organizations, Westville schools, Westville Community Historical Society, purchase of flowers for funerals and town promotions. Section three, severability. The various portions of this ordinance are hereby expressly declared to be severable, and the invalidity of such portion of this order shall not affect the validity of any other portions of this ordinance, which shall be enforced to the fullest extent possible. Section four, all ordinances or portions of ordinance... Section four, all ordinances or portions of ordinances previously passed or adopted by the town of Westville that conflict or inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one-three on the first reading.
Thank you.
Motion made by Albert, seconded by Mrs. Riddell to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one-three on the first reading. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell.
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff.
Yes.
Mr. Pashinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Beforski.
Yes.
Albert votes yes, pass is five zero. I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one-three.
Thank you.
Motion made by Albert, seconded by Mr. Pashinsky to suspend the rules and adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one-three. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Riddell.
Yes.
Mr. Pfaff.
Yes.
Mr. Pashinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Beforski.
Yes.
Albert votes yes, pass is five zero. Anything else on finance? I see they, it looks like late tonight or tomorrow, they're gonna possibly pass some of the COVID relief. There's provisions for state and local governments. I haven't seen it yet, so we'll have to keep, keep our eyes open on that one. Brian Boots.
Yes, sir.
You're on the air, sir.
Anyone on Brian Boots? Brother Josh McGee over here in the front, Kevin Austin, we're three of the four founders of the current building of the prison, the Paul Westville Prison. Uh, first of all, we'd like to thank the council and town for the support for the prison we did last year, and uh, we're looking to grow it this year. A lot of enthusiasm for it. We've had people coming far away from the rest of the city because they enjoy the park and that. I've got some stickers made on it. Give town, uh, the town council. You guys do wish with them. We'd like to start cruising again when the weather breaks. You know, may, but we understand there may be some concern about safety with the little, whatever, we'd like to address that.
So, are the schedules out yet with the league? I know they're starting in April. I don't know what nights they're playing. I don't know.
I'm not sure either. I was contacted by clerk to, uh, to speak with you guys tonight, get your blessings straight through. I understand there's, uh, the safety concern with a lot of children running around. We have been blessed with greatly respectful people coming to our prison. We've only had two instances where we had to talk to someone about their driving in the park, and you're very strict about that, how people park. But I've been concerned about this since the cruise started and started growing. I play some baseball, softball comes back, we're gonna have to work something out. I think, uh, the best case scenario, I wanted to stop any cruising traffic from coming in off of four twenty-one, have them come around, or off of six, have them come around the four twenty-one side, have spectators park on the north side of the basketball park that's there, and until softball or Little League's over, keep all the cruising stuff on the north side of the park, like, uh, from the concession stand port. Not around the concession stand because there are children and people coming in and out there. I don't want to get too close to it, but I, I think there's enough room in the park that we can safely do this and still have this cruising. But I'm getting a lot of questions. We have our own Facebook page. If you've been here on Facebook, it's called the Westville Cruising. Just look it up. Uh, I think if we have to wait until July, June, we're gonna lose a lot of interest in it. People are already wanting to start now. I had a couple of people asking if we could start in the middle of April. I'm like, no, I want to wait, wait till we know the weather's good. I don't want it ground soft at the park because I don't want people parking in the grass, tearing it up. You've all seen what a herd that looks like after pumping us sometimes. I don't want that. I want to leave the park. We want to leave the park better than we find it. Most nights, we'll go down there, an hour later, make sure there's no trash out anywhere. Kevin here has even pulled the trash cans, taken them and put them in his trash can at home. We know there's trash generated by the car show. Um, we just want you guys' blessing and approval to start the car show in May. And if there is any issues with safety, Lori's got my phone number. I can get her, Josh, this, Kevin's, and my brother, brother, my Adams. We address them as soon as we see them. Someone driving, hit one you do at the park, honestly. Other than that, we haven't had any problems. But if there is a problem, we'll handle it immediately. And if there is a big enough problem that we think the town or anybody thinks the safety's been violated, we have to call or something, we can shut it down. But, uh, we just don't want to lose the interest. We really want to continue growing this. I think it's been a good financial move for the businesses that are open during the cruising. I know Jennings gets a lot more business, Casey's families, first West Bank, they're all getting more business. So, that's, that's all I got, Josh. Kevin, you guys got anything else?
Just with, uh, also following, um, the, uh, COVID restrictions and everybody's hearing too bad that it's promoted on our Facebook page, that everybody's still wearing masks and try to keep your distance among each other as much as possible. Uh, and also as far as the, um, extra bit with, uh, the Little League and maybe involved in, in running in with one another would be the amount of kids that would be napped apart. Um, last year at the Vegas show, turnout we had was about one sixty-three, one sixty-eight, that almost two hundred persons, and there was not one incident, um, with kids leaving them. We're talking from incident, uh, infants all the way up to, uh, teenagers riding their bicycles around. If we had noticed any of the kids riding their bikes around, we're getting a little out of control, we'd just nicely address it with them, just to, to be careful, keep everything closed. There was no reason to get outsiders involved. They respect it. We respect them, and everybody has a good time. And Ryan's right, there have been a lot of outsiders, um, expressed interest in traveling distance to tough out, and it's bringing a lot of revenue, the extra little bit into the town, and putting money back in the businesses' pockets, as well as people bringing their boot trucks out that's generating some revenue for them as well, and, and getting people out and about and walking around and, and again.
Experience what Westville has got.
And as long as we're respecting one another, everything's, everything's good. So, we'd really like to have this happen again.
I was writing stuff down, so I wasn't ignoring you as you were talking. You're talking, the first one would be May, May seventh, I think, is the first Friday of, of May. So, you're, what, what you're saying, if I heard right, Ryan, you're, you're gonna have them just come in off of six?
No, I want to have them coming off of four twenty-one. I don't want to have any, until Little League's over, I don't want to have any cruising traffic coming in off of six. I want to have them come around four twenty-one.
See, we got, we got the field down on that side, too.
To your discretion, whatever you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just kicking this up.
On the east side is bigger, there might be more children present there. I thought it would be better if the spectators came in and used the gravel road to go around the north side of the basketball hoop, and then just the cruising cars could come in and.
So you won't, I'm, I'm, so you won't be on a circle this, during the.
Not until after.
Okay.
Um, if you want to try to give a separation for safety's sake, but still be visible, I mean, what's more American than baseball on cars?
Chevys, I think, is the.
And Jimmy's has been bringing their hot dog cart.
What, what concern or thought I have from, from the Little League? Until their season's over, I'd like, I, I don't really want to see competition with a concession stand.
I really don't either. I want.
You know, because that's, that's.
It's fried after bread and butter, right?
Well, that's Little League's bread and butter.
Which is it?
Little League's.
So, I, I, I want to promote them too, and my thoughts on that, I spent a lot of time thinking about this, because I'm still with it, but, uh, I want to only have maybe Jimmy's have their hot dog cart, if that's okay with you, because it's another in-town business. I don't know what the concession stand sells.
And Little League has to take care of itself about that.
That party for Little League.
Because they're, they're hot dogs and popcorn and nachos and. We see what I'm thinking of, I mean, afterwards, I don't care, but I mean, that's.
We can hold off on food vendors until, respectfully ask them not to come until after Little League's.
I mean, I'm not against, against, but I can see that's, that's a big chunk of change for the Little Leagues' offers.
And it would help them, you know?
Yeah.
And I want to help the towns. I mean, when we, Chris, when I started it, it was about getting together by trying to put carbon, it's a culture. The bigger it got, the more I wanted to improve the town.
Yeah.
And bring people to town. So, I have no problems with asking the, the food vendors to have come in the past, to stay, stay away till Little League's over, and, uh, the ones that have come have been very respectful of our wishes and what we've asked of them.
I'm not a big guy on monopolies, but that one I kind of like to see.
I'm not big on it either, but I, I'll, I'll hope to be on it.
Right. Yeah.
They don't think either, I, I don't know.
Ken, I'll tell you what, we've got, we've got, we've got two months. Yeah, because this is the night. So, we got, we got two months. We got another meeting before you, your car show. If the marshal could maybe kind of review it at, at traffic and get with you on that, and then maybe by then, I think Little League just finished their signups, we can see more on when they play and what fields they're using. Maybe some night they won't be using the field here by the elevator, but they'll be using the other one, and we can, you know, for traffic coming in for you guys. So, let's, is that finally, and finally the councils, that's not good to you guys to, to do it, and then if something comes up in the meantime.
Because, you know, you guys supported us last year when we started it, and, uh, I really want to work forward with the town, help grow it, and be safe with it.
Yeah, and I, I think maybe we can see what the schedule is by then for Little League, and maybe we can.
Yeah, I think I'll do what the marshal gave me, I'll self-help, we can stay in contact.
Okay, I think that would be the best way. I, I don't have any problem with doing it, but then if we know a little more, we have a little more planning, so each, each week might be different.
Absolutely.
We can adjust it.
Or any.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? Something good? Okay. If you have any questions, get ahold of, uh, the marshal, or Lori, or any of us.
Okay, I'll do it with the marshal before I get on, do it myself.
Okay. Sounds painless enough.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming tonight, guys, and I, I enjoy.
I know you enjoyed it, that night, you know, you do it.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it's kind of nice to go to something that looked like my high school parking lot, you know? Not the nineteen oh eight, or the sixties.
That's my local, too, it's something to do in our hometown.
Okay, thanks for coming, guys. We appreciate you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We got a guy here named Jamie Vales.
He's sitting here, first of all, I think. Um, you know, you know what we do in town. Had a gala, turning last year for the Sun and Rain, everybody else. We're trying to go ahead and, um, see what we can do, and what can we do this year. We don't know, uh, the state, and all the NSA is, um, moving forward with their turnings, and just so you guys know, it's the vertical memorial foundation of elected to the NSA Hall of Fame this year. So, you guys feel a little bit, uh, for that, there's some castle in there. But yeah, we're just here to find out what we can do, you know, we're to the point we gotta start marketing and promoting what we're gonna do, so we're, we're ready to do whatever we can, um, but certainly we can, to have a part, uh, twenty-eight.
Is that Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah. Uh, same as always, nothing changed. I mean, we kind of want to do the same, um, much as we can. We, this year, we're going to, we're restricted in what we do. We're still gonna go ahead and do something restrictive. Only the flash year, we weren't able to do anything.
Right.
For the people, so, uh, we more like to do the event in our, to the fullest.
Right.
But we understand, you know, we're like everybody else, has contributed.
Yeah.
I understand.
I don't have a problem, as long as you follow whatever guidelines are going on.
Yeah, that's gonna work, and every day we check the phone, so.
Yeah, so.
I mean, if it's not asking too much, if we promote, we're promoting, we're going full force, and then with COVID, you know, just choke back, yes, yes, me.
Yeah, I.
I don't know, I'm glad you're coming back.
Yeah, we didn't plan on not coming back.
You're right, this is your last year.
Yeah, you know, we, we even thought about trying something later, but it, it's not right. You know, what we do is Memorial Day, you know, and so, we thought about turning Sunday, August, when stuff started lining up, and we were having a little turning. We don't know what the park did there for sure, but, yeah, we were never planning on stopping. We just kind of got, you know, we got, we got pushed out. We would never not have.
What, what, uh, days you, you need part?
Twenty-eight through the thirty-first.
Friday, uh, Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, all the, very overall, I say it's everything. Of course, you guys can give us that, uh, reasons. Yeah, we, I said, we just been looking at March, and I'm like, oh, okay, it's good, we don't know what it is.
Hopefully, it won't by then. It's supposed to drop again.
Yeah, no, it's, it's the coldest week possible. My name is no time. Yes, I'll be March.
Don't say snow.
It's not March.
No, it's, yeah, it's still March, actually. But, you know, we thank you guys.
Thank you for what you get.
I should be proud of that NSA ordinance really made for the foundation, which is almost all for town, so.
Very, very, congratulations.
Hey, thank you. Thank you guys for everything you guys have done in the last ten, eleven, twelve years.
Thank you.
To help us and, uh, to let us do what we can do for the town. We can never, I hope, guys, um, like.
Yeah, you, you guys, I, uh, there's three people here studying, I remember when they were in high school, so I, well, I don't know.
The guys turned out all right.
I'll give you the number before we leave with Google, and I'll be kind of, oh, beautiful, Pat, we always love.
That's right, you're right about that, man. We're all about the park, so, so we like seeing you guys a part, but I care, you know, we care.
We're good on this. Okay, okay, we, we got a comment. What is it, Nate?
Mark said, thank you for the team and the plan. We're proud of looking forward to all of that.
Good.
He's not looking forward to the, the.
That's all right.
Probably hadn't typed that. There may be a lot of things that are not there.
Anything else? I want to, whoa.
Yeah, we're good.
On the McMahon lawsuit, uh, we have settled, resolved, uh, we got a deed, we got deed in hand, so I'll be recording the deed dismissing the lawsuit shortly. You sent us the check, right? That would go out to them tomorrow, so we'll, then it'll be buttoned up within, well, it's, it's done, but the reported deed should be back by next week or so.
Check's in the mail.
Yep. Thank you. Anything else?
I don't know if I mentioned this on the streets, but if you're interested, we cleared eighteen to twenty miles of lane miles of snow, just in our town, and a couple of country roads that are in the city lines.
Yes.
Hi, Dan. You guys, uh, bring all that storm going back and forth to the middle. Town of Westville's roads are the best roads they've driven, and all that. A lot of guys just hate the mailbox.
Good.
There's a few mailboxes, but they were run at the bottom, so that wasn't qualified.
One of them also from the Virchville, we didn't really mention, but we're getting ready to redo the fields, park in fields, where there's not, um, uh, partly extensive operating of the fields, uh, putting in some mats and, uh, conditioning the soil and doing artificial.
Artificial project for the, that's our project.
Spring. Artificial turf for.
We're looking into that, you know?
We're waiting on your donations.
I can only come up with enough probably to put a new plate in.
I, I do have a quick question.
Sure.
Also thinking about, um, getting somebody and paying for somebody, uh, possibly, uh, uh, redo the fences, the outdoor fences. Uh, so hopefully we should run by you guys, obviously, once we find out.
Some of them are coming out at the bottom. Oh, like, just like, re-stretch them or?
Yeah, we were just gonna try and get ahold of some fencing companies to come out and kind of give us a quote on what they think we should do with them.
Brother Jeff told me about that the other day, that he's, he might want to talk about that.
Okay.
Jeff said something about that, that he don't care.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna tell you, get all the.
We're to that point where we can't only give back matches to the kids through the park, but also everyone you that park has supported us with all that, please. Figure a little left in the fields.
Appreciate you asking, and we appreciate you, pal. Anything else?
Yes. Um, I'm just kind of curious, uh, second guessing and reading some of the minutes that have come that I've put my hands on, and, uh, some of the meetings, and some of the past videos that are on YouTube, there are several instances where, uh, we reference not going to have part-time police officers. Um, I understand the shortage right now, but why is there this sudden need to permanently have part-time police officers? Why would that?
As, as the meetings that we have said, because of COVID, we have people with a lot of time built up.
Correct.
They have to burn off, so that's, that's the reason why.
Well, I understand that temporarily. I'm asking, why is there, I, I, it was asked at the last meeting, I asked at them, why is there a current position for part-time police officers? We were told the, the hourly rate, the hourly rate was put in because we had to put it in the ordinance, even the.
the ordinance, even though someone temporary has to be in the ordinance. I understand that, but my question is, why aren't we maintaining a list of part-time employees because we've been told time and time again, when we added a police officer, we would not have to have them within the budget?
And we have, we have a list right now to fill that spot with a temporary spot we have.
Again.
And again, that's why we have it, we have...
Well, usually it takes several officers to fill a spot, to fill a shift. The meetings, minutes that you just approved, I asked a question at the end of that meeting, specifically asked, is this a permanent position?
Correct.
The guys said, yes.
No, we said, no, we said at this time, no, you were asking if it was gonna be a permanent position, and we said, no, it was to fill out the COVID spot.
That's not what you said.
That's why I said...
I suggest, I suggest you watch the YouTube video.
Well, I'm gonna space it. Are you on the fire department?
Yes.
As long as we're talking about that, in October, we requested financial information from you guys, and we haven't received that. Could you please forward that to us?
I didn't forward that onto them, but why are you telling my...
No, I...
As a citizen, you are telling...
And that's why I...
Spending my tax dollars, rightfully.
Yes, you're spending mine too, and that money...
The answer to your question is what Mike is saying is correct, but it was also stated that the part-time officers would be kept in reserve on the back burner to cover the burden. If you have a police officer that goes on vacation, and then you have somebody that comes up with the food, there's five people to cover twenty-four hours. If you do the math, it doesn't work.
Well, then why were we told it was going to?
I told you, my words were that they were gonna be kept on the back burner for a year, as we did.
We were told that part-time police officers were not as reliable, that they were not as committed, they were not as invested.
I never said, I never said they weren't reliable, and I never said that they weren't committed, I said that they weren't invested in the town.
I'm sorry, sir, you're right, you're right.
Okay, so you're gonna say something that's said, say it right, how about that?
Fair, fair enough.
So, so what's your point? We, we haven't increased the budget, we're using money that was already there in our budget for the year. We're doing it to fill spots that were because of COVID, that a year ago, nobody had the idea that it was gonna even be here, or if it was, to be stepped again.
My, my point is, seventeen days into the calendar year, we head to earmark, five thousand dollars out of the police department budget, seventeen days, January seventeenth, when we did this, we headed to earmark, five thousand dollars out of the police department budget for this, so what's gonna happen is, if we ended the year when we're short?
We're not...
We're not short of money.
We're not short of the top of our budget.
We're not short of even a salary.
Where, where are we gonna be short of?
They came out of salary, that's very good, Steve.
I, I understand.
Okay, so there's no earmark, it's already, it's already identified as salary, so what's your problem? Are you just talking to talk, because you're like, oh, here's all?
No, sir.
No.
I think you were, you're sitting back and laughing through the meeting.
I did, I'm actually, and this is, this is what frustrates me, why I'm laughing.
You're, you're trying to... Stop, stop, Steve.
You created a safety board tonight, and I'm sure all three members, not you, the, the council did, created a safety board tonight, created, and I, I created members, all three members, I mean, the thing, the thing didn't try on the, on the ordinance, and appointed all three members and paid the salary before anyone even...
A hundred dollars a year.
A hundred, a hundred, a hundred dollars a year.
You're earning about a hundred dollars a year, but you're following a volunteer fire department, a volunteer fire department that gets paid four or five thousand dollars a year each member. That would be the part-time fire department, in my, in my definition.
Each member...
So if your years start quite finished, you start pointing at yourself, like...
Each member does not make four thousand.
How much?
Your chief, Doug, here said that he was over four thousand dollars a year, and everyone gets members, gets paid for the hours that they train and everything else. You're pointing your fingers at this town board every freaking week for what they do, and they bust their butt, and you can't even turn your financial records. You're talking about the tax money they're spending, what about the tax money we're spending at the fire department? If you vote even, you wouldn't even call up the financial records.
The town of Westville's been providing everything that they're...
They haven't given a word document.
They've been providing everything.
No, they haven't, I add, over and over, I've gotten nothing. And I have a question, are you, what's your issue with public safety?
My issue with public safety?
Because you're, you're like, harping on this, fighting for the place, you're a public safety person, right?
Yeah.
Well, what's your issue here?
My issue with public safety isn't, isn't just public safety, it's multiple folks. When you cut, when you cut someone's budget, it drastically...
Well, we're not, the drastic thing here is, Steve, would you provide us those financial charges, and then tell me that you're willing to pass it?
Our attorney, contact your attorney, right?
Is that where your tax...
It is.
Push it.
It is.